When you're ready, we're gonna go. Alright, good morning. Let me, uh, call this Rankin County Board Supervisors Meeting to order. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for braving the weather and coming in. We're gonna start this thing with invocation to get our meeting started. And you'll see on your agendas that you may have picked up, we're gonna kinda deviate from some of the stuff to accommodate what's going on. But if we could, Mr. Slay, if you don't mind, bless us with a few words to get this thing started.
Real quick, you know, it had two fires in Brandon this morning.
Sure.
So would you mind as well of the first responders that are out fighting that as well as other folks?
Thank you.
Let's pray. Lord, thank you for the reminder that you give us that we are trusting in you and your grace and your mercy towards us, Lord. So many of the things that we encounter in this life are beyond our control. Lord, I pray that as we remember that you are a good God who loves us, I pray that we are asking for your blessing and your protection today. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. While others are trying to escape. I pray that I just pray for them and their families. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord. I pray that you can keep them protected and safe, Lord.
Great, thank you, Mr. Slay. Uh, one thing I wanna do, beginning, Mr. Slay, if I get out of whack on this agenda, jerk me back in line. But I do wanna go ahead and make an action and a motion for the remaining employees for Rankin County that we don't have on site right now. We told them to notify us by 10 o'clock. Do we need that in a form of a motion, Craig, just to go ahead and close it? But the agreeance of the board here to close Rankin County offices for the remainder of the day with pending weather coming in?
Yep.
Steve? Bob? Okay, so we're good on that. So Janice, if we could, maybe notify Maria or go ahead and get that notification out 'cause it's 9 o'clock. So any non-essential employees, Rankin County, we'll close the offices that we run for the remainder of the day. If we can do that.
Sheriff's Department?
Sheriff's Department.
Sorry, y'all are essential.
Right, we'll need to get it starting now. Yeah, absolutely. So, uh, Sheriff, it's a tough life if you decide who's essential and not essential over there, but I'm gonna let you kinda...
I'd throw up if you'd get him all out.
Be sure Brad Smith stays, will you?
Oh, yeah.
Whatever we do on that side, so... Alright, so, Mr. Janice, can we get that notification out to those people?
I've been on the website. County offices closed for the remainder of the day.
The remainder of the day, absolutely. I know it's a rough deal coming through Yazoo City and all right now, which should be on top of us this afternoon. Alright, we'll also move into the spot of public comments and recognition. Mr. Slay, we got something for Deputy Moore.
Ronnie, come on, man. Come forward. Sheriff, you may want to come forward as well and make sure that whatever, whoever additional law enforcement, it looks like we got a well, uh, government potential, all law enforcement, all of that, how about y'all up here?
Hey, Steve, you step down first.
Mr. President, members of the board, it is incredible, it is an incredible privilege to recognize not just a member of our law enforcement, not just one of our fabulous deputies who works so hard and long and in tough circumstances, but also somebody who's a good friend of mine and who graduated with me to high school. And so I'm very proud to be able to read this commendation that is congratulating our Rankin County Sheriff Deputy Ronnie Moore, who saved the life of a choking victim. Whereas the Rankin County Board Supervisors has consistently recognized our county's law enforcement under the direction of Sheriff Brian Bailey as a vital component of what makes Rankin County a desirable and safe place to live and raise a family. Whereas the Rankin County Sheriff's Department has been a consistent partner with the Rankin County Board Supervisors in serving and protecting the citizens of Rankin County. And whereas in recognizing the importance of Sheriff Bailey, the other, the other leaders of the Sheriff's Department and the men and women who formed the department, the Rankin County Board Supervisors also recognizes the extraordinary and heroic acts of individual officers. Among them Deputy Ronnie Moore, whose training, insight, quick thinking, and heroism resulted in a life save. Whereas on January the 30th of 2017, Deputy Ronnie Moore responded to an emergency situation at the Pila Haji Bay Trading Post where a patron was choking on food. Deputy Moore performed the Heimlich maneuver. He dislodged the obstruction and he saved the patron's life. As a result of Deputy Moore's actions, this man has made a full recovery. Therefore, it is resolved by the Rankin County Board Supervisors that we then congratulate Rankin County Sheriff, the men and women of the Sheriff's Department, and especially Deputy Ronnie Moore for their dedicated service to the citizens of Rankin County. Deputy Moore is a fine example of the quality of men and women selected by our sheriff and his leadership to serve and protect our citizens each and every day. Their willingness to place themselves in harm's way or answer the call in emergency situations makes Rankin County a safer and more desirable place to live, work, and raise our families. Deputy, that's resolved today, the 16th of January 2018. It's signed by all the supervisors who made it this morning. The others will give them a chance to sign it when they get here, okay? Congratulations, sir. Thank you.
Like I say, Ronnie Moore is one of the cornerstone of the sheriff's office. He's been there the whole time I've been there. I tell you one thing about Ronnie, he always has a smile on his face and he gets compliments from the public on a monthly basis about his professionalism and how he treats people. You know, one of my rules with the sheriff's office is be nice to everybody to give you a reason not to. And he definitely does that. He goes out of the way and helping the public. And he has a deputy sheriff mentality instead of a, uh, just a police officer. I mean, he knows that he's there to serve the public and he shows his actions. I appreciate that, sir.
Appreciate that, Sheriff.
Anything else you wanna say, Tom?
Uh, you said it all, Sheriff. Few times I worked, a couple of years I worked with him. He's my, I know I've been supervising. He made me look good. He made me look good, make Sheriff look good. I mean, he come to work 10 o'clock, wasn't supposed to be there till 11:00. Sometime 9:45. His factory got anything holding, no matter where it was at, running with. That's kinda the man it is.
When you're burning out, say, oh. Lady saying, "My bacon, my bacon." He thought it was a real bacon. There the...
Alright, back onto the agenda. We'll go ahead and address old business.
So, move.
Got a motion to approve by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Item four passes. Item five on the consent agenda.
So, move.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign. Item five passes. We'll skip over Mr. Sullivan, Ms. Laura, unless you wanna address it for him?
I can, real quick.
Or Larry, either one? Okay, Laura.
Okay, first thing is petition to change assessments for 2017 real and personal property.
So, move.
Second.
Alright, so a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with the same sign. Item A passes. Item B?
The next one is to void 2017 tax sales and refund any tax sale purchasers. There's three parcel numbers there that you can see they were erroneously assessed.
Okay.
So, move.
Alright, motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign. Item B passes. Item C?
The next one is to void 2017 personal property tax for VIN number 90151. Due to their own assessment.
Okay.
So, move.
Motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign. Item C passes. Thank you, Ms. Laura. Uh, I do wanna make one thing just for the record size. The reason Mr. Bishop and Mr. Morrison's not here is a weather issue. We're still dealing with a lot of stuff going on in the county, so that's the reason both of those guys are absent today. So I just wanna be sure we had that on the, on the record side of that. Item seven. Mr. Harrison, good morning. Before you have a long day.
Yeah. Uh, request for approval of AT&amp;T utility permit, construction fiber route along Avalon Way installed between Avalon Way and Turtle Ridge.
So, move.
Request of approval of Fannin Water Association utility permit to construct an 8-inch PVC water line and a 14-inch steel casing installed along across Mount Hamstump Ridge Road and 600 linear feet.
Let's, let's address the first one.
Okay, so we got a motion by Mr. Gaines on item A. Item A, second by Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Alright, so any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all opposed, I mean, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign. So, item A passes. Item B?
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Discussion?
This is a, uh, just an extension of the water line and what they're doing is going up from a 4-inch line to an 8-inch line. It's a small subdivision, but in time, there'll be a lot more. So, the Water Association's working really good with us and, and what we ask. Anyhow, it's a good, good thing.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign? Item B passes. Thank you, Mr. Harrison. We appreciate you. Stay safe today.
Yep. Mr. Slay?
Alright, Mr. Parker, item eight.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to really rush to this again.
That's alright.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. I have three items on the agenda.
I'm happy to see you today, by the way.
Well, I'm happy to be here. Better than the old times.
I figured, I figured the weather and everything else doesn't bother you a bit.
It doesn't bother Tim some, but it doesn't bother me.
If anybody, if anybody I was worried about, it wasn't you. I knew you'd be here.
There you go, babe. You're right on top of it.
Go ahead, Mr. Parker.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Clerk. That's right. First item that I have on the agenda is SAP 6117M, which is, was our large overlay contract that was awarded to W. Blaine. And this morning, I'm recommending approval of three subcontractors, which is normal, that being Road Pro Safety, Inc., Delta Constructors, and Lane Line LLC. So I would recommend approval of those subcontractors.
So, move.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign? So, item A passes. Item B?
Okay, thank you, which is our LSRP 614, which includes some work on Andrew Worth Road, Buffalo Road, and Old Highway 80. And I'm requesting authority to advertise that project. But I do want, before you take aye, I want you, I want you to understand that this, this LSRP project will basically be funded through advanced credits. And, you know, we've talked about advanced credits. This is a different set of advanced credits because this is some advanced credit money that comes through the legislature and state aid really wants to utilize this money in case some funding is pulled from the state.
Mr. Parker, where on Old 80 are we talking about?
I mean, from Highway 80 down to Barker Road, uh, Steve.
From the county line?
Uh...
Or does it go nearly to the county line?
To the county line.
Yeah, to the county line.
Okay, I know where you're talking about. Yeah, it needs it bad. I know, sir. I know exactly where you're talking about.
Where the little box go?
Yep, yep, yep.
So I'm requesting authority to advertise that project.
So, move. Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign? Item B passes. Item C?
Item C, that long number there, HPP 7331-00005-10462-6801. That is our Old Fannin Road project. And we're in the finalization stage now. The paperwork has been prepared. State aid has reviewed it and concurred with it. But once the documents are signed, which we'll get those signed later on today, there's some documents that the president has to sign in, Ms. Laura. But then we will get that back to state aid for finalization. But it does appear that we're fixing to close that job out.
Good.
So, move.
Second.
Alright, so we got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign? So, item C passes.
And include, excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Included in that, I was discussing what all has to be done as far as the paperwork, but that pay request that I show on there, which is the final pay request for Southern Rock LLC, was that included in the motion that that be...
Yes, sir. Everything, everything included in item C.
Thank you very much.
I'm glad, and this'll close us out on the letters we've received on Old Fannin Road. So we'll be turnkey done with this deal.
Yes, sir. Once we get it to them and they get it back.
Once they accept it, I got you.
Yes.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Parker. Mr. Slay? Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
I make a motion to set A for February 1.
Alright, so a motion by Mr. Morrow, set item A, public hearing. Second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign? Item A, pass. So, item B, Mr. Slay, on public hearing?
Yes, sir. That's a continuation of a public hearing on the R. Creighton-Luckett Jr. rezoning request. This is Highway 25, District 4. So you guys are on board with us. We had, we got Renee and our community development folks who were not planning to be here until 10 o'clock with the other county employees. And so we've got that little bit of an issue here. My thought process, Mr. President, is to move forward with the hearing and take whatever action we are able to take in light of the fact that we may not have complete information with Renee's absence. So, we will reopen the public hearing on the Creighton-Luckett rezoning request, Highway 25, District 4. That, uh, that hearing is now open. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the R. Creighton-Luckett Jr. rezoning request, Highway 25. Anyone here to speak in opposition? Alright, if you please come forward. You'll wanna state your name and address for the record, please?
Good morning.
Hey, good morning. How are you?
My name is Wanda Singleton. And, um, as the attorney said, we wanna go forward with this. But how can we go forward? Because the objective was for him to be here to let us know what the 20 acres was going to be zoned for. So I don't know how we're gonna go forward if he can't speak for himself.
Okay.
So I'm just waiting to hear what the developer has to say.
Let her take a step back and let's see if somebody, Mr. Creighton, or somebody...
Is anyone here on behalf of the developer, Kelly Bolster, those guys? Guys, my thought would be, at this point, that we simply move to continue this until a later day. We'll make sure that we get good publication on the, on the rescheduled date. Go ahead, Steve.
Just some information. He has been working with Mr. Parker and Mike Harrison, a road guy, with some plans that I think he's getting very close. In fact, he even enlarged where I was asking for minimum three acre lots. I think he enlarged some of the lots. It's gonna be a nice, nice development. But we'll table it until he can be here and answer your questions.
Right, so it'll be no action taken today?
We, people watching the news are not here because we wouldn't be open until 10 o'clock. So, uh, I don't wanna, I wouldn't do anything to jeopardize you or him. So let's table it. That's my...
Absolutely, yeah. Bob, you good with that?
Second.
Yeah, so we need a motion to table it?
Yes, sir, and, and we want to, to table this to a date certain so that it's clear on the record and for the folks that are here that they know precisely when we're gonna take this up. My strong suggestion would be that we take it up on the February 5th board meeting date.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's our next statutory board meeting date.
Okay.
February the 5th. Is that right, Ms. Laura?
Yeah.
9:00 AM. We better double check and make sure I'm not... February the 5th, 9:00 AM. Unless we get snow again, which I hope we don't.
I agree.
February the 5th at 9:00 AM would be the date on which we will take up... That's correct.
Okay.
That'll be the date on which we take, take this matter up from a table position.
Okay. Alright, so we got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign? So, Mr. Slay, that'll be tabled until that point?
Correct.
I guess we can close that hearing?
Absolutely. Gentlemen, the next item, I'm sorry. Are we ready to move to C?
Yes, sir, item C. Sorry.
What I'd like to do, Mr. President, is to take items C and D together.
Okay.
Uh, I'm doing that typically what we do whenever we make a change in our zoning map or zoning ordinance. We, we, as a matter of course, also make a change to our land use plan, which is our guide document. Uh, I think it's appropriate to do that. That's what I typically, when I give legal education talks on zoning and planning, I recommend everybody else they do these together. So, we're following the, the very advice that I typically give, which is that we amend both. So we're gonna take those together in light of the situation that we're dealing with and the importance of these actions. My anticipation is that we're gonna go ahead and conduct the public hearing such as it is. But my thought process at the moment is, since we're not under any sort of time pressure to take these actions, that there's nothing pending that requires action that we'll wanna continue this until another day. But we've got folks here today who wanna participate in this, including our, our friends from CNPD who are here to help us with this as well. So, Mr. President, with your indulgent, we'll, we'll open both public hearings, both on the land use and the official zoning map. And I'll ask, Dave, do you mind? Craig, you may. Okay, she's gonna hang out. Dave's gonna give you guys a quick synopsis about what the plan is with respect to these amendments. And then we will hear from anyone in the audience that needs to speak.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Dave. Thanks for braving the weather this morning. We appreciate you.
Absolutely. The reason we're here came to our attention over the past few months that about, I think about four and a half years ago, the banks and some of the lending agencies amended some of their regulations and went, went, as pertains to underwriting, when they start looking at properties for refinance or for sale, it creates some issues. They started looking at zoning. So, an example where you had someone maybe trying to sell a home that was currently zoned, commercial, for example, it was creating issues with them getting their financing. So, we were asked to work with Renee and, and look at all properties throughout the county that are zoned for something other than the use that's currently there. Uh, in some cases, that was by design. It was planned that way. They were in transitional zoning areas that, you know, it was going from residential to commercial. But there were some other areas, I think, back in 2003 and '04 when the county initially adopted zoning, that we anticipated some areas going more commercial. And a good example, the bulk of what we're really looking at today is in the Starr community, although there were some in each district as well. Those areas, you had clusters that did not go the way we thought they were. So, in, in an effort to alleviate some potential issues with those residents, we recommended that we consider rezoning those. So that, that's pretty much an explanation of how this came about.
You guys had any questions about the purpose behind which we are...
Excuse me for asking this, Bob, 'cause I know that you're going, "He is a dumb sucker." But if, if it was rezoned to commercial, I mean, it was, and someone put a commercial property in there, we rezone it back to residential, what are we doing to that commercial property?
Yeah, we try to avoid those. We looked at these on a case-by-case basis to try to, to avoid that type of conflict. We were trying to primarily focus on areas that had remained residential. Or, and there were a couple of cases, one was in your district where the, the Old Country Meat Packers, the parcel next to it is zoned rather than the, the...
Then that would...
It was just a, it was a error in the map. So there are a couple of those that we're trying to correct. I think those came about because the county got the new parcel data, John's office, a couple of years ago, we got new parcel data. And when everything transferred over, there was a couple that got miscoded. But, um, the bulk of it, I think, is gonna be in the Starr community. There are, like, like I say, a couple here and there elsewhere. But trying to avoid what you're talking about. We, we don't want to rezone someone's property if it's, if it is being used as commercial.
Alright, Bob, anything else? Steve? Thank you, Dave.
Right, so Jared's not here.
Right.
You heard that the bulk of the adjustments that are being made affect Jared's district primarily. And so, um, at this time, the public hearing is open. I will ask if there is anyone here to speak on the matter of the amendment of the land use plan and the zoning map. If you will step forward, please. State your name and address and then speak to the board about any issues that you have.
Mr. Slay, my name's James Renfro. I'm an attorney, real estate attorney here in Rankin County. I believe I know Mr. Morrow. I've dealt with y'all before.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow.
And this is Susan Hampton. We have a piece of property that's 9.24 acres. So it's a very large tract on Highway 49 that we've had since 2004 that's zoned commercial. I think that our concerns has actually probably been alleviated by Mr. Slay saying, stating that he was gonna table this. Uh, one of our concerns is they're attempting to rezone the bookends of the property to residential, which obviously would impact what we can do developmentally on the 9.24 acres. As far as the commercial use of this property, it's right across from Camper Kingdom. And matter of fact, I think one of the, there's a spiritual advisor right to the right of, that's part of the residential zoning. So, um, you know, we would like to, because you're tabling, it's not necessarily a current issue, but we do want to look at the overall economic value and impact that's gonna affect our 9.24.
Sure.
Ms. Hampton, if you have anything to say?
So you're requesting that the 9.24 stay and bookend stay at commercial as opposed to what we're proposing to change it to residential?
As of right now, that's what we're requesting. But I understand you're gonna table it, so our position may change But I understand you're going to table it, so our position may change depending upon what we can get through our appraisal system.
It's actually even better for these guys than what we do today. The most recent iteration of the map, and this results, by the way, from a community meeting that took place in the Starr community at the end of last week. On the basis of the comments that were received in that community meeting, we went back and have decided that there are specific areas that are currently C3 that need to remain C3, even though it was justified to look at doing something different. So, I'm pretty confident, I just consulted with Ms. Oohs, I'm pretty confident that these parcels that are being referenced are not going to change to C3 under the current iteration of the proposed zoning map. We hope to get the most recent iteration of the map up on the website for everybody to look at and satisfy themselves. And I think that will be done as soon as the weather clears. But we just haven't had an opportunity to get it updated since that meeting last week. I think this issue is not an issue.
Yeah, great. And thank you for coming out this morning in the weather. And we'll be sure Mr. Morrison knows and is aware of on everything on that same side. We're not going to take any action without him here for that side.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Sir, sir, you see Mr. Swales, I think he's just getting your name for the record. Good morning. If you would, just introduce yourself to the board, just for the record.
I'm Roger Bell.
I'm Darius Bell.
Okay, where do y'all live?
On Highway 49 in Starr.
Okay.
And we were in that meeting, uh, last week. And they were saying that our property on Highway 49 was commercial.
Okay.
And we were trying to see what we need to do to make it residential.
Okay.
Get it rezoned and make it residential.
Mr. Slay, you familiar with their property?
I am. This is actually a parcel, I believe. Do you live in the house, Mr. Bell? Okay. Well, somebody at the meeting, somebody, I won't say who, actually announced what is apparently your age. I'm not going to do that here, but you've lived in that house your, for pretty much your whole life, am I right?
He talking about the other house. He talking about Ms. Johnson's house.
Okay.
That was her daughter.
Okay, her daughter's 12.
Eighty-four, eighty-six.
Okay, all right. So, at any rate, you've lived in the house a long time, right? All right, so this is a parcel that is directly fronting on Highway 49. This is one of those situations where if we identify, it's a little bit unique in that most of the residential that we see is not directly fronting 49. And so, this is one of those hard situations that's very hard to address. It doesn't mean that they are left without remedy if something bad were to happen. So, here's the thing. As long as they stay in the house, they are welcome to, as long as she's alive and in that house, it can stay a residential use. Nobody's going to make anybody move. Nobody's going to change anything under the current context. The only issue that we have is if something happens and there's a destruction of a house, a fire or tornado, something like that. If that were to happen, then there is an issue created to be able to build that residential use back in a commercial zone. We don't allow that. So, what would have to happen is, in that particular circumstance, these folks would need to petition for a rezoning of that parcel, right?
Back to the board.
So, there's a remedy. It doesn't, they're not left without a remedy. It's just that if we pick individual properties that are directly fronting on 49, clearly those need to be highway commercial. They have to be. If we pick bits and pieces, we will be accused of spot zoning, which, by the way, is what Mr. Renfro was referring to without telling you. That's a problem for us. It jeopardizes the entirety of our zoning context in that area. So, the solution for these folks, unfortunately, is not that we would just rezone it to residential to match the use. By virtue of where it is, they'll have to come back and ask the court for relief if something were to happen.
Okay. Y'all good with that? Y'all understand basically what?
I promise you, if your house burns and you come back in here, I'm going to vote to let you build another house back.
Without a doubt.
That is...
But we hope nothing happens.
I mean, but I know that's what you're thinking.
Sure. All right. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for coming out in the weather.
Does anyone else wish to speak at this time?
Hey, good morning, sir. How are you? If you would, just introduce yourself to the board and your address.
Mike Arthur. Live at 182 Mandarin Drive in the Marblehead subdivision, across the road from the proposed, going from residential to commercial. I assume there would be some type of restaurant built there, according to the Pearl River Water Valley District. Have concerns about a restaurant, because most of them include bars now.
Sure.
And a lot of kids in that area, and it's just right in the middle of residential.
Right. Dave, are you familiar with the piece of property he's talking about? Gray, maybe?
Yeah, it's at Arbor, or right beside Arbor Landing.
Before you get to Arbor Landing, in that area?
Yes. And based on PRV's development proposal with the developer and their lease intentions, it is the section that is to be commercial. Initially, it was listed on the county's zoning map that the Marina area would be commercial, which is now being built out as residential. And the area next to the boat ramp between Fanon Landing and Marina at Arbor Landing is where the area was. And so, that is the recommendation that has been made. It is in line with the ARV.
Does that make sense to you, what they're saying?
It does. I just have concerns about the quality of life in that area.
Sure.
A lot of us live just right across the road, right there. And just want to let my voice be heard.
Great. Thank you for your comments, very much.
As you guys know, PRV does not have any zoning authority.
Right.
But they do have leasehold interest authority, and they also have a land use plan. And so, what we try to do with those guys is to accommodate their land use plan, their, sort of their guide as to where properties are going. We try to match our land use plan and our zoning context with, in cooperation with them. So, that's one of those parcels, Mr. President, that's sort of a mixed bag. You've got multiple political subdivisions that are trying to address that use. It's not just us, and so we have to accommodate PRV as well on that.
Sure. All right, so Mr. Slay, do you need a, I'm sorry, anything else to comment?
Let's see, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in this particular hearing? Anyone? Mr. President, in light of the, in light of the situation with the weather, my suggestion, humbly offered, would be that we continue this hearing until a date certain. I would suggest February the 5th, and we'll do this again. And we'll open it back up for additional comments at that time. And then if everybody's settled on what we've done, we can take action. I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines, to table this to the 5th of February. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. So, the item is tabled until the 5th, Mr. Slay.
Yes.
Other actions under your section, starts with item E?
Yes, sir. This is to receive and approve a petition to amend a plat in Hidden Hills, Phase 10B, to allow a variance of the rear setback and authorization of the board president to sign the order approving the amended plat. This is taking it from a 15-foot rear setback on one lot to 10 to accommodate drainage.
All right, it's going to motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. Item E passes. So, item F, Mr. Slay?
Yes, sir. This has been long in coming here. This is a discussion of and potential authorization of the acceptance of transfer title to Puckett Fire Department property from the town of Puckett in exchange for appropriate consideration. And so, I'm with Mr. Morrow's indulgence. I'm going to get him to walk you guys through how we got to where we are and see what you think about it.
As y'all are aware, the Puckett Fire Department, the rural fire department itself has a much bigger footprint out there than, in which they service, other than just the village of Puckett. When they were trying to work out their contract with, between the two parties, at one point in time, we decided, since the county had about $225,000 in that location down there, that's probably best interest for the county to maintain and own that facility. This will also give us an opportunity to stage for any other natural disasters down there as well, and not having to be with the village and the Puckett folks and talk with the mayor and the board. They were agreeable to this. We're going to kind of work out a little bit of a trade. They're going to convey their interest to us in the building. We've agreed to overlay the parking lot for the park down there, as well as Stripe, I believe we agreed to throw that in there too, Stripe it too, sometime with the next two FYs. I think Mike's come up and figured around $60,000 from AdCamp is what it would probably cost us to do that. I think it's a win-win for the people because the park down there is used by everybody down in the South Park, down in that, just in the middle of Puckett. So, far as us doing that, it's just, it's a positive thing for the folks that live down there. And we'll have control of the fire station. We'll lease it back to the, to the fire department to use. And so, I would, I'd like to recommend that we accept that. And I think that's part of the language and the deed that's going on record. And Mr. Baker, who's the attorney for the Puckett folks, are asking for us to formally approve that at today's meeting.
Okay.
So, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, so again, a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. Item F passes.
Now that the board has accepted the property and the legal description from the deed in Puckett, we have one additional matter to take up on that, which is the next item. And this is to discuss and potentially authorize the declaration of surplus real property related to the parcel transferred from the town of Puckett to authorize the county administrator to publish notice of sealed bids and the setting of a deadline to receive those sealed bids. In your packet, you will have a notice of publication that's already been prepared. This is a remnant parcel of the original legal description for the town of Puckett Volunteer Fire Department. And this remnant parcel is about a tenth of an acre. It's not connected to the parcel that the building's sitting on, so it's clearly a remnant that needs to be surplused and offered for sale. And so, we're asking you guys to declare it surplus now and to authorize Ms. Law to run a publication. We'll do the same thing that we did with the little strip out at Robin Hood, which was a street that never got built, you recall. And so, what I would propose with Mr. Morrow's input here would be to set a minimum base bid, so we cover, at least cover our expenses on this.
What did we come up with?
We came up with $1,600 as our base bid on this thing, which is the appraisal, and by the way, it's already been appraised, so that we are clear as to what valuation is. The appraisal came back that it's worth about $850. So, we're going to set it for, as to cover the cost of the appraisal, plus the 850 that it was valued for. That'll be our minimum base bid.
I'll make that motion.
All right, so again, a motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. So, item G passes. So, item H, Mr. Slay?
And for the record, your attorney is not charging for any of the work associated with that, transfer of that surplus parcel, so that's why we're not adding the legal fees into this thing.
My, my.
Merry Christmas.
Okay. Item H is the acknowledgement of receipt of insurance rebate funds from the town of Puckett on behalf of the Volunteer Fire Department and authorization of the county administrator to release commensurate funds to the fire department that are equivalent to the insurance rebate funds received.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. So, item H passes. Item A, Mr. Slay?
Holy cow, Mr. Gurus is back there incognito. I didn't recognize him with the beard. So, now, now that I've drawn a bead on him being here, I'm grateful that he's here because he needs to be here for this next item. This is, and you can see what we're going to be doing. I'm not going to read this entire agenda item. You guys have been provided with the documentation associated with the Flowood Town Center TIF plan and proposal. One of the reasons why we need to take this up today is because the developer will be addressing this similar request to the city of Flowood at their meeting tonight, assuming they have it. Chris, if you'll come to the... Come on, man.
I've heard nothing yet about whether or not that meeting will take place, but I'll, I'll be there if I have to walk. Thank you very much. For the record, Chris Gurus, my company's Gurus and Associates, and I'm here today on behalf of Southern Lifestyle Development Company from Lafayette, Louisiana. They're doing traditional neighborhood developments and conventional neighborhood developments across the country, the southeast primarily. They've got over 30 developments. And you may recognize the name, they recently bought Lost Rabbit out of its financial woes and are bringing it back in their interest in the metro area. You know, brought them to look at the old Flowood Town Center property that's owned by Community Bank and try to bring that project back to life. I previously represented Flowood Town Center LLC before Rankin County and Flowood. And historical information, in July of 2008, the city of Flowood and Rankin County approved a tax increment financing plan for that version of the project back in '08. And basically, we're here today to ask that the board set a public hearing tonight. We'll ask Flowood to set a public hearing for an amended and restated TIF plan, basically reaffirming that previous commitment. There are some slight changes. That TIF district was about 20 acres. This one is about 30 acres. That TIF plan had a maximum bonding authority of 5.2 million. This one's not to exceed 5.5. The county's original commitment there was tax, real and personal property tax increases up to 20 mils of taxation. We're not asking for any change in that. So, that would remain as the original commitment.
This meets all our scheme agreed. This meets all our policy guidelines.
This is well in excess of $150 million total investment of the project. So, it's well over our minimum threshold. They are asking for what amounts of less than, I think around 48% of our building investment, all the increment. And so, that's less than our 50% max that we typically see here.
And again, this was already approved back in July of '08, or sometime in that timeframe?
I make a motion to set the public hearing.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines, to set the public hearing. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign.
Mr. Morrow, may I? No, you may not. We're going to set the public hearing, but I would, I would like for us to introduce a couple of contingencies to the setting, if I may. One contingency would be, and we typically do this whenever we have timing considerations. This is a, this is really a Flowood-driven TIF project. It will be Flowood bonds that are issued. The mechanisms for dealing with debt service will flow through the city of Flowood. So, this really impacts the city as much as it does us. So, I would like to make your setting of the hearing motion contingent on Flowood actually doing the same thing. Let's make sure that they also look forward to setting their own public hearing and that they will likewise approve the plan. And our approval at that time would be contingent upon them doing it. The second contingency that I'd like to suggest is this. Because there is interplay between the county and the city as it relates to debt service, their abhorrent impact is being pledged to a degree. Their sales tax is being pledged to a degree for debt service. Our abhorrent...
Sales tax. Property tax.
Property tax, exactly. I'm sorry, I got that wrong. The, there is this combination of political subdivisions who are providing debt service. What I would like to see us do is to place a maximum of the incremental abhorrent increase that is pledged for debt service to be not to exceed 50% of the debt service at any time that we are remitting. Here's the, here's the reason behind that. There is the possibility that our 20 mils could actually end up being greater than 50% of the debt service.
Sure.
Right? So, if I were Flowood and I was Morrow, I'd make sure I got the county's abhorrent increment before I had to cut my check, because mine might be less than 50%. So, I would like for us to say, we will pledge all of that 20 mil increment. We will pledge it, but we're not going to let you have more than what amounts to dead-on 50% of the debt service. And that way, we get to keep whatever in excess of that. We keep that. We've never really done that before. We've never had to do that before. This is just in the event that none of us are here when that kind of calculation is going on, and we make sure we just, everybody plays fair.
I'll make those adjustments to my motion that we include those two contingencies.
Second.
So, again, a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. Item A passes.
We'll see y'all back here for the hearing on, in February 5th, and thank you for your support.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Slay, I think that concludes your setup.
Yes, sir. That's all I have. I've got, guys, we got a couple of folks that are supposed to be here any minute. And I've got one, a very important matter in executive session that will take the justice of...
Ms. Oster has her...
All right. And again, just for people here, I think MHP is reporting the stacks icing up and freezing over, so, just for the word of our folks that are out there.
Snow's coming down a little heavier now.
So, we've got a pretty good line coming through, but Ms. Oster, if we can go through yours, what we got to say?
Thank you. The first item I have is authority to turn VRC, which is your vital records control contract, as of June 1st. We have a storage they charge about $100 a month, and this is for some old records. We're not using them anymore, so what we'll do is request our records back and store them out there in Marquette. Dispose of a lot of them.
All right, so again, a motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. Item A passes.
Thank you. The next item is authority to pay JH&amp;H Architect Planners for their invoice and reimbursables, $41,661.53, and this is for the misdemeanor facility and authority to issue that check.
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. Item C.
Authority to issue the notice to proceed to start the construction of misdemeanor facility.
So, again, a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. Item C passes. Item D.
Request approval to increase the mileage reimbursement rate to 5.545 cents, according to the Department of Finance Administration, January 1 of 2018.
So moved.
All right, so a motion by Mr. Morrow. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. Item D passes. Item E, Ms. Oster.
Authority to purchase three 2015 Ford Police Interceptor utilities from the Missouri Highway Patrol in the amount of $18,750 each, and authority for Brett McAlpin, Billy Lord, Brian Whittington, and Steve Weaver to travel and pick up the vehicles. And this is pursuant to 31713, the Mississippi Code.
So moved.
All right, so a motion by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. Item E passes. Item F?
Item F is authority to pay John Sullivan Texas as for $3,500 per annum for maintaining two full-time offices, and this is pursuant to 25-331. I thought he would be here if y'all had any questions, so...
Can we, can we wait on that?
We can.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I'll move that to the next meeting.
Table that to the next meeting.
Do you know, do you know anything about it much? About what, I mean, not this, about the, you know, it came out in paper and all, and that's really the first I kind of really, I mean, knew, I'd heard, but I knew that it was really...
He mentioned earlier, not earlier on, but when Pat won the mayor's race, that Pat was going to do some of the work down there for Homestead exemption and stuff like that down in the Richmond, where we have a tax collector set up in that office. So, but he's gonna kind of wait and see what kind of response he got, you know, before he decided to move forward, for his full-time, but apparently he decided to go forward, that's, that's the only thing I know about far as a second office is concerned.
Yeah, I mean, I had heard kind of the same thing, and heard, and then I saw...
State law allows him to, to charge or however.
More in the paper, but, and in more detail, but it didn't mention this part.
Yeah.
We'll move that.
All right, so item S has been tabled and moved over. Do you need a, any kind of motion on that, Mr. Slade?
No, I don't think we do. I think we can just move it.
Take it off the agenda.
He may show up at 10 o'clock, so I mean...
Instructing administrator to move it to the next agenda item. It's the president's prerogative to do it.
Okay, let's move it there then. Item 11, I believe, is where we're at. Additional business, Ms. Lawrence?
We have discussion of potential action on the ratification of requests to advertise county resources with the communities working to unite youth, and that's in the winner's circle with Tori Bowie.
Again, that's $250, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, not to exceed $250. Anybody, got a motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrow?
But I would like to say, we normally stay with school, but of course, this is an exception, I just want to set on the record, because, you know, we get bombarded other things, I guess, we have another Olympic gold medalist, we need to look at that one again.
Right.
Mr. Gaines and I attended the little thing yesterday, and it was a small crowd, but it was very informative, and she is a very humble young lady athlete that's, you know, I don't know if all of you know, she's actually considered the fastest woman in the world now, she won the world championship, so...
All right.
I do have one item to add quickly before...
I think I need to vote on that, Donna, real quick.
Okay.
All right, so...
Make motion approved.
Well, I think we already got it.
We have that.
I think I just need to vote.
We have a motion, yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with a like sign. So item A passes, that's for $250, Ms. Oster.
Yes, yes.
All right, anything else additional business was?
I do have one to add, and that would be approval to expend $5,000 of recreational funds to the B Club, which is District 3 pursuant to House Bill 1699.
Make a motion to add to the agenda.
All right, so a motion added to the agenda by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with a like sign.
Motion to approve.
So a motion approved by Mr. Morrow, second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with a like sign. So, it's not an item, but it, the issue passes.
I got one thing just to mention, we don't have to go into it now, cause of opposite weather, but I was asked by some of the election commissioners, and I think Laura, you may have already be aware of this, I'm not sure, it seemed like I heard something about it before, but with all the new, the new voting machines, with doing all the paper, they're saying they need, they just don't have enough room with all the stuff they have to print and do, and they were wondering if there's something else, they, they mentioned maybe the, the Health Department. I don't know, is it not being used?
I have a suggestion. The house out there behind the Human Resources Center that we never have done anything with?
Yeah.
And I don't know how big it is, but it's not being used for anything.
Where?
That house out there behind the Human Resources, remember they had that, used to have a shelter in it? Shelter went away, and we've been sitting on it for about a year now and not doing anything with it.
And we do maintain the utilities out there to keep the house going.
Well, that's a thought, but I mean, looking at something possibly, I can kind of see where they're...
We do, the, the Health Department, you know, had said that they were going, not gonna work out the office anymore, they have a lot of stuff stored in there, and I believe somebody comes in maybe once a month or so, but there's a possibility...
Well, once a month, and they need to probably move on then.
They had originally told me that they would stay there while they destroyed the records.